Six thirty-one and the Board of Library Trustees regular meeting is, comes to order. It is Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Sorry.
June, June, oh. Correction on our minutes, on our motions, June sixth, June twentieth. Yes, yes, thank you. Correction, June twentieth, Board of Library Trustees, regular meeting, six thirty-one. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? Secretary DiLorenzo?
Yes. Trustee Cox?
Here.
Trustee DiLorenzo, here. Trustee Nealon?
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Here.
Trustee Senate? Absent. Trustee Summer?
Here.
Trustee Fishman?
Here. Thank you. We'll now move on to review of our draft minutes and the review of the draft of the May sixteenth regular board meeting. It's our attachment one. May I have a motion, please?
I had a few callouts or comments to those minutes. On page one, the footer should refer to the, um, should refer.
Thank you. We did, we did catch that on the printed version.
Okay, doctor. And then I think my name may be misspelled on page one. I think it said Maria. Just a little. Sure does. Not, not important. Under item one.
Oh, under visitors, yes.
Yeah, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you. As noted. All right, now, may we have a motion to approve, please?
I move approval of the May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular board meeting minutes with corrections.
Second?
All right, and I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Uh, Maria.
Maria, all right, thank you. Trustee DiLorenzo. Okay, and, um, Trustee DiLorenzo, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate? Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Great, thank you. A public comment? Seeing none. We'll move on. Presentations, none. A treasurer's report. We'll move on. Trustee Summer, please.
Good evening, I just have a couple of comments. There was a check for, um, good computer view, for twenty thousand six, six hundred, was for contract service and then contract, contractual services. Thus, the coding of seventy-four, one fifty instead of, it's, it's computer, it's contract service is not actually equipped. Okay. There's no taxes received during the current month, which was to be expected. The only change in the special reserve fund balances relates to interest income. There were no dispersments from the special reserve fund. There was one dispersment from the liability fund in the amount of forty-five, twenty-four. If people have their profit and loss statements handy, I just would like to point something out to make it a little easier. There's two of them. There is one, which would be the general fund only, and then there's a second one that says all classes. In reviewing the profit and loss statement for the general fund only, it looks like taxes collected, which is account forty-one thousand totaling about four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, looks like it is underfunded by six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Did everybody see that? If you look at, and I actually looked at a more detailed profit and loss statement, and, um, where I noted that the other funds, the liability funds, FICA and IRMF, they're included in the general fund annual budgeted number, but the funds received for these accounts were not included in the income section. So, if you go to the P and L for all classes, which is the next one, you can see taxes collected is actually five million, five hundred and seven thousand dollars. And it's higher than what you see in the general fund, while the budgeted amount of five million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand is the same on both reports. So, the budgeted number is the same on both reports, but the, the difference in the taxes collected on general fund, the general fund budgeted number includes the other, the, the special funds too. But for some reason, in the general fund only, the income piece isn't included. I'll say that again. In the general fund only profit and loss statement, the only taxes collected are those for the general fund. However, the budgeted amount includes the special funds. So, for whatever reason, if you go to the second profit and loss, all classes, that five million, five hundred and thousand includes the funds that we have received for both the general fund and the special funds. The budgeted number is still for the general fund, special funds. So, we really are only under budget by eighty-three thousand dollars.
Do we need to clarify that with an asterisk, or so rather than not having that clarified from here on out?
It's gonna be fixed.
Okay.
There seems to be something in, with the contract accountant working on it, we don't have as easy a time as I would, we would like to make these modifications, but once we have someone in to get QuickBooks tidied up at the year end, it'll look just right. So, I, my final thing is, with having an outside accountant handling the accounting, the error appears to lie in some QuickBooks classification. This, along with the continued discrepancy in my totals for general fund and special result, fund balances, will be addressed and reconciled with the audit at the end of June. The totals for the special and general fund are fine. There's a somehow, there's some misclassification somewhere. It's not material.
Thank you, Trustee Summer, for identifying that. And thank you for your good thorough.
I'm sure you all caught that.
Well, it, it, it'll take a moment to sink in, but I think it, it was helpful. Thank you.
You bet. And that's it? Do I have a motion? And I didn't have any other questions or comments on the sat, the check detail. Is there any, a move for approval? Are there any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the bills and salaries for April, for May, two thousand and twenty-three?
So, sorry.
That's okay. You gotta say the whole thing.
I move approval of the bills and salaries check detail for April, two thousand and twenty-three as presented.
It's supposed to be say May.
Should be May.
Sorry, gang.
For May, two thousand and twenty-three, sorry, as presented.
I second. We have a motion from Trustee Cox and second from Trustee O'Keefe. Thank you.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
DiLorenzo, yes. Nealon?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Summer?
Yes.
And Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed.
Should I also mention, then, should I re, reiterate what the motion was?
Yes, and medicaries.
Yes, yes, okay. So, um, um, the motion for bills and salaries check detail for May, two thousand and twenty-three was moved and seconded and motion passed.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Back to my agenda. We have our action items, and, um, our first is the review and approval of the draft strategic plan for years two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-seven. And, um, I just went back, I just wanted to say that today we are, there have not been any updates since we reviewed the strategic plan at last month's board meeting, so nothing really has changed. And, um, do I need a little timeline reminder? I went through it for myself, and would that be useful or not so much?
Not necessary, but thank you.
Okay, very good. Then, moving on. So, um, we'll move on then. Director Austin, anything you'd like to add at this point?
I would just like to thank the board for your support in going through this process with us. It's been, it's been a year. We've really appreciated this process, and we're really looking forward to speaking on behalf of the staff to being able to adopt this plan and to begin reporting our progress towards these goals as we move forward.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question. Will the plan be included in print in, to hand out, or how would this be distributed to the public?
We had not planned to print copies of the, of the strategic plan. We, we can distribute it in-house. That's not been part of our communication plan, but we do have a website dedicated to the plan, and we'll be updating this right away, along with the process that led us to this stage.
And you'll flag it on the landing page of the?
Yes.
On the homepage?
Yes.
Is that what you, yeah, okay. Unless you think, or the board would like to discuss, any other kind of distribution other than electronic? Do you think it would be of value? Any kind of?
It was just information. I just really wanted to know whether it was gonna be tipped into the newsletter, whatever is, you think you, you had the most success with in the past in terms of getting it out?
Our, our email newsletter has been really our most effective means of getting this kind of information out. That's where we got the most feedback when we've been talking about our process over the course of the last year. So, I think we would certainly memorialize the adoption of the plan via our email newsletter, in the very least.
There were more than a thousand responses, so. Thirty thousand people in Wilmatt, but a thousand is a good, we'll take it. Wonderful.
Maybe have a few copies of, I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm just suggesting that.
Do you think a hundred copies at the front desk would be positive?
I don't see any harm in that, but, you know, I don't wanna push the budget anyway. There's already an adequate way of distributing it, you know, so.
Maybe even nothing is, you know, it doesn't have to be glossy. Maybe it could just be simply, you know, like what we print out at home, essentially, and those could be available.
Color copy.
Just a, just an option you may have. You may have patrons who do like that kind of physical, you know, text to look at and enjoy, and then there can be more questions. It might not be a bad idea to have fifty to a hundred copies available.
Since we only had a total of how many people participate?
A thousand?
No, no.
Oh, in the actual?
In person?
How many was? Eight? I'd probably print twenty-five. I'd print, except for, I'd do it in-house. I'd print a very low number, and if they happened to fly out the door, I'd print more.
You could just make it available, and those who ask can get a printed copy as they come in. Do they come in and request?
Okay, we'll, we'll provide print copies.
I think I could see something.
I'll leave it to our communications team to come up with a strategy to, to launch that. Thank you, though. We'll, we'll print copies.
But I envision something could be at the welcome desk, maybe with a little vertical, you know, have that in and say, "Ask us about it," or something like that. Thank you.
No, I think a, a print copy just shows also, like, all of the work and effort. And if somebody comes in and says, "I wanna know more about that," and you can say, "Here's a year, here's a year of collaboration." And I think that also is like a good marketing tool for all of the effort and work that's gone into it. So, a little bit of the cost, I think, could go a long way.
Good, good point. Thank you. Wonderful. All right, seeing no other discussion, may we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the final draft of the strategic plan for twenty-three to twenty-seven as presented.
I will second that. Trustee Nealon? Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you. The motion to approve the drafts of the strategic plan for years two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-seven has been, I have a motion, and we have a second, and the motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to our annual budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. As noted, the Finance Committee met on June ninth, twenty-three, to conduct their second review of the draft annual budget for years twenty-three, twenty-four. The Finance Committee recommends approval of the bu, annual budget for years two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four as presented in the attachment and totaling six million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. And, um, we have some discussion, or any discussion? Trustee Summer?
The only thing I wanna mention is the only increase from the previous board meeting to the Finance Committee was a small increase of nine thousand, three hundred and four dollars in salaries. Very minor for the budget. It was doing, we went through, double-checked some things and a small tweaking of numbers. But I just, as I mentioned in the meeting, I appreciate the fact that you and the staff took a hard look at the numbers and decreased some of the items they felt were, they could live with, and that you will continue to be mindful of the budget going forward, as it's not sustainable in, with a deficit spending in the five hundred thousand. But I do really appreciate the work that you and the staff did. Is that all? Anything you'd like to say? Director Austin?
We greatly support, we greatly appreciate the support of the board in going through this process with us. We agree that this is a really challenging budget to try to sustain year over year. We're playing with the hand that we've been dealt. So, with the, with the rising costs, a competitive labor market, and our contractual fees and everything on the rise, I think this represents a hard look at what the actual costs are to operate a public library of our size with our goals. And we appreciate your, your attention to those aspirations and our fulfillment of the strategic plan as presented in this budget. And, yeah, thank you.
Well, I, I reiterate that, um, we appreciate that you did give it a hard look. You listened, you heard your board, and made a good attempt to bring the costs down as best that you could with all the considerations that you've just mentioned. So, thank you. All right, may we have any other discussion? Okay, thank you. Uh, may we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the final draft of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget totaling six million, three hundred and ninety-eight, two hundred and forty-seven thousand as presented.
I second.
Thank you.
Roll call, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
DiLorenzo, yes. Nealon?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Motion passed, thank you. Again, the annual, we've just passed the annual budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, and the, uh, the operating budget totaling six million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars as presented. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on, then, we have a trustee, I'm sorry. Director Austin, I'll get it. It'll come out. Director Austin's report, please.
Thank you. All right. I have prepared something that I wanted to share with you about some programming that we did last week. And I've debated about how much I wanted to share this, but since I've already launched into it, I think I'm gonna go ahead and just read something that I prepared here, because I think it's important. With tonight's adoption of our latest strategic plan and updated mission statement, we are proud to reinforce that Wilmatt Public Library welcomes everyone, and there will always be something for everyone at our library. We strive to provide collections, programs, and resources that reflect the diverse interests of and needs of our community as we advance our values of inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility. As I'm sure you're all aware, every June, people across the United States celebrate Pride Month to honor the joys, accomplishments, and struggles of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community. Pride Month celebrates the history of the LGBTQ plus community and works to improve visibility for its members, just as Black History Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and Hispanic Heritage Months do for their respective communities. It's a wonderful opportunity for us all to celebrate love, acceptance, identity, authenticity, and the freedom to be one's true self, free from discrimination. This month, the library is highlighting titles from our collections and hosting programs and events for all ages celebrating pride. The Village of Wilmatt is promoting the library's programs as part of their own celebration of pride in June, including their recent proclamation and installation of colorful pride banner, banners along Green Bay Road. On Wednesday, June fourteenth, the library, in collaboration with Winnetka Northfield Public Library District, hosted award-winning children's entertainer and author Lyns Amor here in this room for songs and stories that celebrated the LGBTQ community in a Rainbow Storytime program that was intended for LGBTQ families and their allies. This program was followed by a Rainbow Parenting program featuring Lyns Amor in conversation with their new book, Rainbow Parenting: Your Guide to Raising Queer Kids and Their Allies, an essential guide for parents and caregivers to raising queer-friendly children in a gender-affirming space. The program was followed by a Q and A and book signing with book sales provided by the book stall. Both events were well-attended and reflected the interest and need for such programming in our community. Unfortunately, not all people understand or respect Pride Month for LGBTQ plus Americans and allies. Pride Month serves as an opportunity to celebrate the uniqueness of identity and find community and to showcase the resilience of the community during a time of rising anti-LGBTQ hate and rhetoric across the country. With the recent climate of increased challenges to library materials and programs focused on these topics, our staff provided talking points for our team so that we can be prepared in the case that critics express concerns about library programs, materials, and displays. And while our Storytime program was primarily attended by families with children, our intended audience, we did have a few registered unaccompanied adults who were curious about the program. And one of those individuals, a non-resident member of an extremist organization who wrote the email to us referring to this program as a drag event, that's in the communications that's circulating here before you, they took, they took their curiosity to the point of disrespect and disruption of the event, the likes of which I have never seen in the thirty years that I've been working in this industry. While the library did receive one comment from a resident who expressed reservations about this month's programming, and two from non-residents, the library also received nine messages expressing great appreciation and support for our inclusive efforts. You'll see those in there as well. We recognize that each family in our community has the right to determine what resources and events are appropriate for their own family. We know that discussion of these identities is important for some families. We also respect that not every family chooses to do so. Participation in these programs and utilization of materials and resources on these topics is a choice for each family. To empower individual growth and to foster belonging and understanding, the library offers a range of programs so that everyone can find something of interest and value to them. We have many programs available during the month of June, and we hope that those who disregard our pride celebration programming and resources will find something else from our offerings. Just two days prior to these programs, Governor Pritzker signed into law an unprecedented piece of legislation effectively banning book banning by stating that if a library or library system seeks to be eligible for state funding, it must either adopt the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights that indicates that materials should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval, or develop a written statement declaring that the inherent authority of the library or library system to prohibit the practice of banning specific books or resources. As you know, Wilmatt Public Library took that step many years ago, and we further reinforced it in our recent comprehensive collection management policy that we updated earlier this year. In that policy, we stated, "The Board of Library Trustees, the board, recognizes that there is a broad range of interests among district residents. Therefore, the library's collection includes a variety of resources that present varying viewpoints on a diverse range of topics, including items that may be viewed as controversial by some members of the community. The library and the board resolve to protect the right to freely access information and resources from censorship and book banning, and to seek to provide our community with the opportunity to read and access information freely as guaranteed by the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States." Again, in other words, Wilmatt Public Library welcomes everyone, and there will always be something for everyone at our library. We strive to provide collections, programs, and resources that reflect the diverse interests and needs of our community as we advance our values of inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility. I felt it incumbent upon me after we've just adopted the strategic plan and mission statement to make that statement this evening. I'm gonna pause there for a moment. Do you, do you all, I mean, a number of you attended that event that we had last week here in this room. I felt that that was an important event, but I do also feel that that was an unusual experience for a storytime, to, to have that kind of interest and that kind of participation.
When you say the participation by those who weren't particularly interested in the program?
There was, there was one individual who was quite disrespectful in that program and expressed disrespect towards the presenter of the program, as well as to the children and families that were enjoying the program when they disrupted the program.
Were they asked to leave?
They were not asked to leave. They effectively said their piece and then were silent for the rest of the program. But they were disruptive enough that it was rude to all who attended. But that's my position as the director. Trustees who were there, do you have any observations you would share about that?
I would just say, first of all, I agree with everything you said. And it was unfortunate that this person was disruptive and disrespectful. I think that Lyns handled it magnificently and just, you know, kept going and was undeterred. And I think the attend, the other attendees, you know, took note and then just decided to, you know, continue to enjoy the, the performance. My son, who is twelve, who attended, said to me afterwards, "Wow, Mom, that was, that was really disrespectful," and commented to me, like, "Why would somebody do that? That was really disrespectful. Like, if you don't wanna come, you don't have to come." And I, I thought, well, he's twelve, and he totally got it. And so, I just thought that the performance was enjoyed. It's unfortunate this person, you know, was trying to disrupt, but I think that we all enjoyed, and I think even the, the young people who attended. And I think they just were able to, you know, tune it out. And it's unfortunate that that has to happen, but I think that's the way it has to be. Good for your son, to break it. I think that's such a strength and compliment to you, that they would recognize that and say, "That was rude." Yeah, just couldn't believe it. It was like, wow.
Attending, um, I thank you very much also. An excellent commentary, and thank you. I was there and could observe that there was an individual there who, while he was quiet through most of the program, which was delightful, and the children really seemed to enjoy it. I, um, I think they were hopefully oblivious to most of it, and the entertainer presenter was just, obviously, knew what she was do, she, she just, as you say, moved forward, and it didn't seem to rattle her. It came towards the end of the program, and, um, we had, you had safety monitors right there, and I think those of us who, I was sitting in the back of the room, could see that there was this moment of tension. They were there, and I felt secure and safe with their presence. It was unfortunate, but thankfully, again, I think the children enjoyed it, and we, we moved, moved through that moment.
I would also just add that it's a shame at a children's event that you have to feel a threat. And I think while myself and others could feel the tension, I think you're right, most of the youngsters were, you know, enjoying and, and not noticing, but the tension was very uncomfortable. And I think at a children's event, that's just a true shame that, um, that element is brought in. into what should be a very celebratory, very welcoming, very inclusive event. There was an introduction of a very hostile element that was palpable to attendees. I felt it.
I felt it too. There was a high level of tension. It made me very uncomfortable and surprised at one point that it would touch us here. But nowhere is immune to different, you know, different points of view, but not at this time and place.
I think it's really concerning, you know. I'm glad the event continued and was handled really well, but, I mean, I'm like right now getting a feeling of like a projected unsafeness.
It was very uncomfortable.
Even if the kids, say if the kids were junior high, when they're, you know, acting out more, or high school, I think when they really are, you know, coming out as gay or transgender more, I think that would be even riskier. So, and I'm concerned that this, though, I mean, I know I'm being like a, looking at the dark side, but, you know, I'm concerned that this will happen again in the future, but, you know, it's another point. I think this is the way that our society is kind of headed. It worries me.
But it doesn't mean we don't continue the programs.
I think that was my question, is did you learn anything from this incident that might inform when we host other events that may prevent a similar reaction from somebody?
That's the best that we can do, is to take this example and to reflect upon it. So the staff and I are going to be meeting this week to talk more about this programming. We have every intent to continue to offer the programs that are of interest to this community, obviously this being a topic that's one of them. And we do have a policy. We have a policy about how we do our programming, and in our policy, it states that some programs and events are offered for specific age groups, and that that information accompanies all publicity about those programs. And we did. We said that this program was intended for a specific audience. This organization that was specifically targeting our program was well-aware of that fact, and I think that was kind of what their signal was, is that they said, "Well, this is the only thing in their program for the month that is highlighting, is targeting a specific audience, so we're going to come and make a statement about that." But we do have a policy that states that we do reserve the right to limit attendance in programs to those persons of age specified in the publicity. We elected not to do that, and I think that's one of the key pieces of this, of what I've led with this evening. While we have a policy that states that we could very well do that for any space reservation purposes, this is a substantial room, and clearly there was enough room for everyone who wished to attend that program. That said, we want to welcome everyone, and we did welcome everyone. We opened this program up, which was, you know, done in partnership with Winnetka Northfield. We opened it up to anyone who wished to pre-register to attend our program. And in fact, we had children and families from communities outside of our two partner communities who came. We had one group that came all the way from Barrington, who really wanted to see this program. And we also had this one individual who came from Displanes. You know, so in offering it to that family, we were also offering it to this other individual. We are walking the talk. We welcome everyone. But it is not the purpose for an individual to disrupt the program, all right? You can come and you can express yourself and enjoy the programming, or not, or be curious about the program, but to disrespect the presenter and to create a disruptive environment for everyone that was attending, I think is in conflict with our code of conduct. And I think that is a key piece that we need to be looking at going forward. And I really don't want to restrict access to our programs necessarily, but I really do have to put myself in the shoes of our attendees of that program and see, you know, how those children and families may have felt. And you're right, there are a number of variables in considering this. I mean, whoever that individual may be that would disrupt it, whatever definition they may have of themselves, or the age groups of the folks who are attending any program, there are a number of variables that could play out with that. But overarching goal is to ensure that everyone feels welcome when they come to the library. And that did not necessarily seem to match our goal of creating a welcoming atmosphere.
I think, though, you have to balance everyone feeling welcome with the safety and security of those who are attending and those who are present in this building. And do we, as a board and as staff and the Director, need to say, or perhaps there is already a policy in place of, if you're in a situation where it's extremely uncomfortable, do you ask that person to leave? Do you call the police? Again, like, I agree with welcoming all, but not to the detriment of the presenter, the attendees, you know, like, I think it's a balance.
Another thing, too, Marian, is like, we're talking about an individual when this was a person who was from an organization, that you have a habit of doing that sort of thing. It's, you know, it's organized outside of the community. And can you name that organization, or is that not a clue?
I was kind of curious, too. Is that something you want to do or not want to say?
Not necessarily, but I just, you know, I'm not trying to call out this particular individual necessarily. Well, I did. But I just feel that this is a bit of an aberration, as I said. You know, I've been around the block a few times, and I haven't quite seen this level of activation around a specific topic. And we have just taken this step to ensure that we are going to not only abide by the First Amendment of the Constitution, but we are going to affirm that we serve everyone equally in our library, that this is a neutral ground for everyone to have an experience, to feel safe, to find something that meets their interests, and that we have to kind of balance that, that it is a very complex time in our society right now. But we have to agree to some degree of civility. That's what our code of conduct is for. We have to respect one another. The point of the Storytime was not to have a debate about facts or about opinion.
It wasn't a roundtable, it was a Storytime for children.
That's right, it's a Storytime, y'all. We had another program with Lyns that evening, as I mentioned, author of Rainbow Parenting, and it was an absolutely wonderful program that talked about the complexity of raising a child in this day and age as they're learning to interpret the world around them, their feelings, and their identity, and how we can be supportive in raising children who are exploring their identity. I thought that that was an absolutely wonderful program. It was some of the most intelligent conversation that I've heard on this topic. And I really wish that that individual had maybe more appropriately selected to attend that program, to maybe edify their position a bit more.
There was someone, I believe, that was going to attend that one that was from a more controversial, I just happened to notice, and that went fine? Controversial organization? At that one, right? Wasn't there someone with a controversial background that was going to be at that one, the evening one? Don't know.
Don't know.
Okay. Because it was well-attended, and it was a good discussion, it was a great event.
So obviously, we're having a lot more conversation about this topic here than maybe we would about any program that we've ever offered before. I don't know that I've even dwelled this long on partner programs that we've done, like one book and so on. But I wanted to highlight the fact that, as I mentioned, we have this mission. And I wanted to kind of touch on, you know, the frontier of what is covered by this, what the spirit of that is. We have policy that supports our mission, and we're going to continue to offer programming in support of our community in every way that we can.
And do we need to consider having policy expressing the civility of all who attend? You know, and really emphasizing that language. It's not a question of, "You can't disagree." We all disagree on things, but actually being civil when you walk through the store.
I would second that, that you referenced a code of conduct. I admit, I don't know that I'm familiar with it, but maybe that's something that we just reiterate more often, and so that if somebody is signing up for an event, it's clear to them that there is a code of conduct, and as you said, you can come and disagree, but respect is...
You don't disrupt the program.
Right. And to be clear, I mean, there were several adults who attended the program who were unaccompanied, and they were respectful. And they just, they stood by, they took their notes, they had their own interpretation of the event. They did not disrupt the performer, they were not disrespectful to the children and families who were in attendance. They were simply curious about what was going on in the program. And that is appropriate.
And as you said, I'm sure it's an aberration, it's an outlier, but I think we're all aware that these things, in some ways, there's fuel for it, and we're going into an election year that might be contentious, and I could foresee this happening again. And so maybe it is time to review something like a code of conduct that we publicize broadly that, you know, you are welcome to come, but we expect respect and civility for programs. But I'm glad it's still just an aberration and not a common thing, but there's a part of me that's a little skeptical that it won't happen again sometime soon. I mean, anybody who was around for seminar days at New Trier, it got ugly, you know, and there are forces at play that are...
Noisy.
We represent a diverse community, and we support all the diverse interests of this community, so that's...
As represented by the nine, as you mentioned, emails that are in the yellow folder that were very affirmative, very positive, very encouraging, people, I believe, from our community.
Well, thank you to the staff and you for hosting such programming and affirming that this is a place for all.
Thank you.
I would also say, Anthony, I would commend you and the staff, the way the whole situation was handled. I think it was the best possible outcome in a difficult situation. I think the attendees enjoyed, the children were having a wonderful time, and were just dancing and, you know...
It was joyous.
Really joyous, and having so much fun. And I think most adults were aware of what was happening, but were able to tune it out. And I think thanks to you and the staff, it was handled, and there was an awareness that there was planning, and that there was, you know, watchfulness in the room, and that you were in charge of the event, and that we were able to just enjoy, and we did enjoy, and it was a success. And I think everyone who went there for the purpose of enjoying, who wanted to engage in the content, was engaged and really, really very happy, and those I saw leaving were really thrilled. And so I think it was, overall, a big success, and I think your team just was able to kind of navigate a very tricky situation and, you know, pull that off, and that's not easy to do, so I commend you.
Thank you, appreciate that. The presenter also made a comment about this on their TikTok. They made a video about this while they were still here, having just gone through that process, and their interpretation of the way that that program went. Well, it was really kind of beautiful. From their perspective, from the stage, they noticed what they defined as the heckler trying to disrupt the program, but we were in the middle of a song at that point, a medley of "Somewhere Over the Rainbow" and "Rainbow Connection," which was really quite beautiful. And the children who were singing along with the performer, their voices began to swell as the voice of the one individual in the audience was kind of rising, their voices too were beginning to rise, and suddenly started to drown out that individual. So, anyway, it was kind of, it was interesting to hear what their perspective was from the stage as well, and it was quite lovely. So, anyway, we've spent an awful lot of time on this topic. I really appreciate taking the moment to explore that. I've spent a lot of time thinking about it. As we do, we want to make sure that everyone feels welcome in our community and the library. So, thank you for taking that time to explore this topic with me tonight. All right, we can move forward. I won't go into great detail about my report this month in respect of our time, but I will call out a couple items very briefly, just as bullet points from my report, and then if you've got any questions, I'm happy to address those. As I mentioned, I'll just kind of go down the line of the things, kind of as they appear in my report. Our shelving and shifting team has gone through and has shifted a number of our collections to promote accessibility and to support the maintenance work that they've been doing. We're trying to get all of our collections off of what has been referred to as the bottom shelf, at the bases of our shelving units, and that work continues. The lower level, as you know, has been complete. The large print area has also been updated, and we're working through the fiction collection right now on the first floor as well. In May, our door counts were up markedly, and you can see that we were seeing a trend. Our hourly door counts are really off the charts for the weekends, real high-density activity in the weekends, and very busy Mondays. We've got a lot of exciting new items coming to our collection, including the Library of Things Collection. Again, we're adding, in response to demand, some new MetaQuest VR sets and some other equipment, as you see in my report. Our collection team has basically spent out their budgets for the end of the fiscal year, which is awesome. We're right where we need to be right now, with a lot of great new items hitting the shelves here in the next couple weeks. Our digital services and maker services manager, Lauren Kelly, has gone through and planned our online resources for the coming fiscal year based upon their analysis of the trending and usage this past year, and they've provided some highlights and graphs in the report this month that reflect that. We had 158 new cardholders join the library in May, that's awesome, and we are on track for our strongest fiscal year of circulation since 2018-19. We're excited about that. As you know, we were, in May, we were celebrating AAPI Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Month, and we had programs and displays for all ages across the collections. We are preparing to launch an entirely new notary service for the public. This has been on our wish list for a long time, and we're doing a soft launch this month, and we'll start publicizing that once we kind of get into a rhythm with that. So, I'm excited to offer that service. The youth services team conducted a massive campaign to promote our summer reading clubs right before school got out this spring, reaching nearly 2,000 students at various schools across town. The youth services team also expanded our sensory-friendly tools for children to borrow while they're visiting the library, and updated our sensory page on the website, showing all the tools that we have there. We've enhanced some resources in our tech center, especially our growing collection of digitization resources and tools. We did launch our June-through-August summer newsletter, which hit homes in late May. And we're narrowing the field of candidates for our telephone system replacement project that we've been talking about here for quite some time, and we hope to bring in some sample systems for the staff to test here in July, hopefully making a recommendation to you all about where we would like to go with that system here yet this summer. As I mentioned, in our finance meeting, HR Manager Mike Boone and I conducted a study of our salary structure in May and applied some market adjustments to a few positions ahead of this evening's approved operating budget, which includes a 4% increase in compensation for all staff. Finally, we're excited to report that we have hired our next circulation manager. Matthew Hoffman will be joining us next Monday from Park Ridge Public Library, where he brings over 20 years of circulation, public library, and CCS experience. We really feel that he's going to be a true asset to our team, and we're really excited to welcome him aboard. Those are the key highlights from my report. Are there any items that you have questions or comments about?
I do.
Yeah.
One of them was about the notary. I think that's wonderful. People are always hunting around for notary. I think that's a great service to offer, me included. And then one question I had, I was surprised to see that 25,000 of the 66,000 AMH require special handling. That seems kind of high. Tell me, is that surprising to you?
Not surprising. That was actually a conscious decision on our part when we elected to tag our collections. So, really what those items are, generally, they're audiovisual materials. So, for example, if you are still one of those who checks out books on CD, there are CD sets that have 40 CDs in them. Because we have not placed a tag, nor would we be able to place a tag on every single disc in that set, we have to manually check to make sure that the last one wasn't left in the CD player before we put it back on the shelf. So, it's a little, it's one last double-check that reinforces that computers can't really replace a human being in every case.
That's a little different than 25,000 books of 10 CDs in a set or something.
Right, it's more like that. So, we double-check our media to make sure that the content is there.
I also want to make a comment. Someone made in the comment section about getting a VCR. I thought that was an actually bad idea for people that want to get, we have the equipment to put VCR to digitization. We happen to have the VCR, but many people don't, but they have plans to. We happen to have the VCR, but many people don't, but they have plans to.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I was, I just wrote down 158 new cardholders. It's delightful. Did they beat the bushes, though? I mean, I think that's great, young children. How old do you have to be again to get a card?
Anyone can get a library card.
Anyone. Excellent. Okay.
But, you know, the people come and go in our district, you know, people move in, people move out. So we're welcoming these new cardholders.
That's great. This is a random question. When people move out of, will that, how long can they keep a library card? Or how does that work?
So there's, there's a little piece in the circulation report here this month that on, at least on an annual basis, we do it every six months. We participate with CCS, our consortium, has a program where we partner with the post office. It's called the National Change of Address. And we get a notice from them that X number of homes have been vacated. These names have moved out. They have a new principal address. And then we confirm that data with our own, and that's how we can purge our non-users. And oftentimes, the addresses will be de-duped at that time, and we'll get the updated, you know, residents. And by adopting that procedure, we effectively now have library cards that will never expire. If you stay at your address forever, you, you just kind of age in place in your home, you will never need to come in. And as our previous policy was, every three years, you needed to bring in your driver's license or a piece of mail to affirm that you were still a resident. We simply rely on this data now to keep track of that information.
Seems efficient. Thank you.
Yep.
But somebody, ostensibly, someone could move out of the areas and then access all our eBooks or everything else like that with their library card.
And that is why we purge the records so that those cards are no longer active.
Good question. Thank you. Nitty-gritty of operations. People off, you know, sometimes we do get asked these kinds of questions. So, thank you. Trustee Cox.
Okay, that concludes my report.
Okay. Moving on, we have committee reports, ILA, Rails. Trustee Nealon, anything to report?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Trustee Austin? I'm Director Austin. We used to, we've heard that before. Sorry about that. Thank you.
No, I have no report.
Okay. Then intergovernmental cooperation committee update. Trustee Cox or Nealon?
Her name was...
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, so I went to the meeting a few weeks ago, and it was a very active meeting. It was more of a brainstorming session. I think following the last session that you had, they had some consultants, I believe, there, some facilitators helping do like a brainstorming, design thinking activity. So just, I probably didn't clarify, remember that they were working on, they were working on mental health. That's the topic, which is obviously very multifaceted and complicated. So I think that's why they felt they needed some assistance in maybe gathering ideas and then putting them in a format that was easier to manage. So we were broken up into groups to kind of brainstorm around the issues of building awareness and understanding, establishing baseline data and reporting what's the current ideal citizen experience and what's the future ideal citizen experience were the four things we kind of worked on in a group. And I can say that I think it was really just like, it was the post-it note kind of activity that I think will be gathered together and then informed the next meeting where I think this team of facilitators is coming back in to move a little closer probably to more action items collectively. So it was really more of a working meeting. So there were a few things, though, that I did take away from the discussion that might be more pertinent to the library. And one is just the role of the library as the source of information. So some of the ideas that I worked, I was hearing were things like, you know, is there space in the library for more of like a display or something related to all of the mental health services that are available? The township had, you know, as a funder for most of the mental health agencies in the community, there is kind of a, a place where that has a lot of good information, at least a list of who's available. You know, maybe it's a bulletin board or, you know, like the brochure racks, but somewhere where maybe a place, just like kind of a display of mental health resources was one. Library of Things, which I thought was really interesting, that there are some things related to mental health. Like I know there's a lightbox available. Are there other things that are, that we can either kind of identify or tag as like good for your mental health? Like sound machines or certain exercise machines or things that, within the library of things, that might be able to be checked out? I shouldn't, that hadn't occurred to me, but I was like, is that interesting?
And may I ask, did that come from outside or people knew of Library of Things and identified those? Yeah, oh, great. Great.
I love the idea of tagging some as mental, good for your mental, things that we already have. Right.
There's probably a lot more than you, than we think of. And then a key thing that we talked about was really, one of the best things for mental health is community connection, sense of belonging, which are all things that the library does extremely well. And again, just maybe more with a lens of how that supports mental health in the community and things that maybe do bring in, and a sense of purpose. So things like volunteerism, community service projects, all those things that kind of add to that cohesiveness for a community. Those were just things that popped up that were, that were applicable.
The name was the focus. Was the focus all age groups? Or was there emphasis on what was going on in the schools or, or do you think it was just broad?
It was broad. It was, and I think that's the, the challenge of this topic for those different agencies. Because everybody's interaction, I think, is pretty unique. Like for the park districts, it really is about like exercise, activity, family. You know, they talked about like the, you know, like park district soccer as a place for sense of belonging and family interaction, which is very different in schools. There is in the police department, which deal with mental health in a much different way. So it is a really broad topic, but, so I think it might take a little while to kind of come up with the intergovernmental piece of that. But I think one place they're going to start is if they were talking about not even like taglines, but almost like a logo branding, mental health, like consistent mental health messaging for all entities.
Could be demystifying it in some way. So it's like, because there's a sense of, like, people going underground or hiding, feeling shame, or, you know. So if this comes out of community, as a community effort, I could see where there would be, it's okay to say, okay, I've been depressed, or, you know, I've been, you know, that sort of thing.
And I think we talked, we talked some about the wellness piece of mental health too, and I think the opportunity for places like the library and the park district and the village to promote thriving and flourishing in addition to the mental health services that are available. We have a really strong network of mental health agencies.
Oh, my gosh.
In this community.
We're on the, I just, it's amazing.
Yeah.
And I didn't know about it until I got on the committee.
Same, right?
Just to have that list available even for staff, I mean, for staff. And I mean, maybe we do have it, but staff and the community having some sort of a, I don't know how you would put it out there, but it's wonderful.
And I think there's, there's like 24-hour crisis help, you know, and I know sometimes things happen here after hours where mental health support would be helpful, you know, and if there's availability within the network that we already have, you know, or something can be worked out with a mental health agency, you know. But you're right, I, I didn't know how many places were available until I was on the committee and learned more about them. So it was, it was a pleasure to help.
Thank you. Thanks for stepping in as you did, and great report. Thank you very much. Good. Information items, we're passing around the communication, the comments, and anything about ILA?
We're, we're sending staff this week. The, the conference starts on the 22nd, continues through the weekend. There is some programming for trustees, not as much as what has been offered in the past. I don't believe any of you are attending, so, but I will pass along more information from United for Libraries as, as those resources become available.
Great. Okay. Well, no, any new business? Seeing none, may I have a motion? May we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm on the board to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. And we have a voice vote. All those in favor of adjourning at 7:31. Very efficient meeting within the hour. I'll say...
Aye.
Aye.
Great. We now will adjourn our June 20th meeting at 7:31. Thank you, trustees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.